Welcome to the special board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Wednesday, June 16th, 2021. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Trustees, be reminded to turn off your microphone and camera on your devices until you are recognized to speak. Please only use the chat box to type hand up. Once you've been recognized, please turn on your microphone and camera. Given that June is National Indigenous History Month in Canada, we will begin our June meetings with the land acknowledgement.
Halton, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround me greatly.
Our steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty land.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
The acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Trustee Gubert, would you please lead us in the opening prayer, the national anthem, and the oath of citizenship?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. Good evening, everybody. Please join me in the sign of our faith, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Lord God, we come to you with humility. In full gratitude and thanksgiving for all of your incredible works and blessings, through all the highs and the lows. We can always come to you for love, protection, and guidance. We pray that you continue to be with us and fill us with your heart, to lead us in your love to those around us. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Please rise for our national anthem and oath of citizenship.
Thank you, trustee Gubert. Approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Trustee Agnew?
Moved by trustee Agnew, a seconder.
O'Brien.
Seconded by trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien, you have your hand up? Well, are there any, are all in favor, any, all in favor or any opposed to approval of the agenda?
I'm opposed, Mr. Chair.
I'm opposed, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries.
Declaration. Sorry, Mr. Chair, I didn't have a chance to unmute myself. I'm also opposed. Thank you.
I don't want to press a button and make it blow up or something. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest? Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Item 4.1, budget estimates, deals with teacher salaries. My wife is a teacher with the board, therefore I will be declaring a conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you. Trustee DeRosa, did you have your hand up also?
I did, Mr. Chair. I will follow declaring the same conflict of interest for the same reasons.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item 4.1, staff reports, 2021-2022 budget estimates. So we'll give trustee O'Brien and trustee DeRosa a moment to leave the meeting.
A point of privilege, I believe we're allowed to stay as long as we don't say a word.
Do you promise?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a clarification on that. I will not. I will stay, but I will not opine on the salary line if it comes to the point of the vote. I will vote with respect to the rest of the budget other than the salary.
This is a staff report, there's no, there's no vote.
If it, okay, that's great, but I will stay as well.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me know. Superintendent Lofts, you have the floor.
Thank you through Mr. Chair. Welcome everyone to our 2021-2022 budget estimate presentation. It's our draft budget that we have prepared for you tonight. I'd like to first start off by thanking Adam Cross, our senior manager of financial services, Cheryl Dal Rumpel, our manager of budget and capital, and the whole finance team with help preparing this difficult budget with so many unknowns. There was very, quite a few late nights to get this to this point, especially when budgets were released the first week of May, or the GSNs were released the first week of May, which is approximately six weeks from a typical non-COVID-type year. So thank you, everyone. You can see there, I have presented the agenda that we have to go through tonight. There's a few items. Now, it's not too long a presentation, but it will take a little bit of time to get through. So I'm going to go first to the budget challenges. So this year, you can see the challenges and the ongoing challenges we have in a typical year, but our largest challenge for this year is obviously the global pandemic and COVID-19. There's so many unknowns right now with respect to funding, expenses and whatnot. As we know, we discussed this, or we had a report back relating to the GSNs. The ministry has announced funding of about seven and a half million for us, but only confirmed about 3.9 million of that for the start of the year. The remaining 3.6 million in COVID funding will be flowed through to the boards in the fall, assuming that it's still required in the fall, and depending on where we are with respect to the global pandemic. So looking at our enrollment. You can see here that our enrollment is very similar to. To where, I shouldn't say very similar, we're actually up about 1% or so overall compared to our revised estimates. However, we're still down about 1.3% from our original pre-pandemic estimates. We're down about 509 students in the elementary panel, and we're essentially in line in the secondary panel. We're up about 11 students. And just to remind trustees, an enrollment is our largest driver with respect to revenue. So I'm going to hand it over right now to Adam, and he's going to look at some of our revenue for the upcoming year, or estimated revenue for the upcoming year.
Thank you, Aaron. So on this slide, we've summarized the major revenue categories for the school board, and you'll notice at the bottom there, we're showing a decrease in revenue over, compared to revised estimates from the current year of 1.5%, or roughly 7 million. The main driver for that decrease compared to revised estimates is the reduction in the funding stabilization amount there that you can see of 9.3 million. So if you recall back to revised estimates in December, this funding stabilization came about when enrollment numbers were trending much lower across the province than originally estimated during the summer when school boards were doing their budgets. So the province announced a stabilization funding for 2021-2022. They've let us know that they're not continuing with this type of stabilization funding, and so we need to be a bit more conservative with our enrollment projections for 21-22. Having said that, top-line GSN revenue has increased over revised estimates by roughly $8 million. That's largely due to a slight increase in enrollment projections from revised estimates to this budget of 0.8 of a percent, or 290 ADE, as well as increases due to the funding for centrally negotiated collective agreements that came into effect last year. The movement of several PPFs, so those are the special grants into the GSN funding. For us, that's SHISM and after-school skills development. An increase in the ministry benchmarks, particularly around some spec ed, some ops and maintenance, and some recent immigrant supplements to kind of counterbalance some reduced numbers that we're seeing in that area. In terms of the priorities and partnership funds, so the PPFs, again, the reduction here from revised estimates is largely due to lower COVID funding. So this year, we're roughly, as Aaron alluded to, and we'll talk to later, 3.9 million right now in our budget for COVID funding, compared to 17 million last year. In terms of some of the other key PPFs that we've seen year over year, so our literacy and basic skills has remained relatively flat, so has our Ontario Youth Apprenticeship Program. The $422,000 difference there you see towards language training. So that was a carry forward from last year that we moved in from deferred revenue, so there's no longer that deferred revenue to be utilized for 2021-2022. So there's no balance to report there. In terms of the federal government, so this is our, we're in our year two of our five-year contract with the federal government to run their language instructions for newcomers program. And there's a slight increase for year two to cover our operating costs of 200,000. Trustee DeRosa, you have a question?
Okay, can we hold questions till the end, so we don't derail your presentation?
Certainly.
Thank you. You on the speaker's list?
In terms of some other changes from revised estimates, so recoverable wages are slightly higher. We're projecting slightly higher recoverable wages for 21-22, and those are secondments, so those are staff that we seconded out to other organizations. So we have more of those for the upcoming year. In terms of rents, community use of schools and facilities, so we've increased this back to more normal annual funding that we collect, kind of anticipating a more normal return to use of our schools, given the current increases in vaccinations. In terms of international student tuition, so we're projecting lower for international students because there's still some uncertainty on how the, when and how the borders will open. In terms of before and after care, there's a slight increase in before and after care. Again, this is, we offered or provided a slight discount to our users last year as part of the COVID-19 kind of extra cleaning that they had to do on our behalf when they were using our facilities, as well as we have a couple of new locations that are going to be fully operational for the upcoming year. And then the other two major changes in terms of revenue are we're projecting lower school-generated funds. We received significantly lower, or collected significantly lower, school-generated funds this year due to the COVID-19 pandemic. So we're adjusting both the revenue and expenses when it comes to school-generated funds down to accommodate this. And then the last increase there you see on this slide relates to an increase in deferred capital contributions. So this is the amortization of ministry funding for ministry-funded capital assets. So we continue to build and purchase more capital assets, and with that comes more funding from the ministry. So now looking at our draft expenses for 21-22. When we look at total classroom in expenses for the year, you can see that there are some fluctuations across some of the accounts, our line items, and I'll go through those. So classroom teachers, there's a slight increase of just under a million dollars. That's largely driven by collective agreement negotiated compensation and grid movement, which I talked about on the previous slide. We do receive funding for that for the ministry to offset that, those increases. In terms of occasional teachers, so last year, we budgeted significantly more in terms of sick time due to the uncertainties around the COVID-19 pandemic. We have scaled that back for this year based on almost a full year of actual sick time that we've seen and our ability to fill all the positions that are open due to sick time. In terms of educational assistance, there's a slight increase in educational assistance for the current year, and that's driven by the program enhancements that we'll speak to later in the presentation with respect to five additional educational assistance. In terms of early childhood educators, so this has decreased this year, and that's largely driven by the projected enrollment numbers for kindergarten classes, as well as projected less virtual school classes, kindergarten classes for the upcoming school year. In terms of textbooks and classroom supplies, so we've increased instructional supplies provided to the schools for the upcoming year. Computers, so there's a significant decrease in computer expenses over revised estimates. This is largely due to the COVID-19 funding that we did receive throughout 2021, or 2020-2021 school year. So this is, the decrease is driven by not having that additional funding and therefore not purchasing additional computer tech for COVID-19 purposes. In terms of professional, professional and technical, so there is a slight, or an increase in this. There's several reasons for that, a couple being an increase in mental health support staff and an increase in CYCs, as well as grid movement across all the employees that are in this category, including computer analysts and techs, and increased interpreter costs for the upcoming school year. And then the last sort of one I want to touch on, on this slide, is the continuing education. So there's a decrease in continuing education. There's two drivers of this. There's the first one being reduced summer school teachers. So two years ago, when the pandemic started, or two summers ago when the pandemic started, we saw a significant increase in summer school uptake by students. We kind of projected a similar case for this upcoming summer. But next year, when we move back to more of a traditional in-classroom potential summer school experience, we've kind of adjusted the projected needs for next summer to be lower. There's also a PPF that completed in 2020-2021 related to e-learning development costs. So we've adjusted the expenses to reflect the no longer need for those costs. In terms of the non-classroom expenses of the board, so board administration has increased slightly over last year. There's a couple of sort of housekeeping items that we had to address this year. So last year, we removed some benefit costs as they, there's kind of a miscommunication in terms of legacy superintendent benefit costs. So these are costs for benefits that previously retired superintendents are entitled to up to the age of 65. So we've added those costs back in. And we've also reclassified one position into admin, and there's grid movement across the staff in board admin. In terms of transportation, so you can see here that we're projecting a decrease when it comes to next year's estimates compared to revised estimates of 600,000. And this is largely due to a decrease in COVID-19-related funding for travel costs and cleaning. But I do want to point out that for transportation as a whole, we are projecting expenses to exceed our funding allocation by 1.29 million. So there's a significant kind of gap between what we're being funded for and what our costs for transportation are projected to be for 2021-2022. And that's driven by, we're only receiving funding of roughly 9.4 million related to transportation, and our costs, as you can see here, are 10.7 million. In terms of our school operations and maintenance, so there are several drivers of the decrease to school ops and maintenance. There's the reduction in temporary custodial staff that we received funding for last year for COVID purposes. Due to reduced COVID-19 funding, we've reduced our temporary custodial staff. We have incorporated the program enhancement for the additional plant manager in school operations and maintenance. We've also adjusted in terms of a decrease in our utility costs primarily related to hydro. And then there's also been a reduction in HVAC costs again for reduced COVID-19 funding to be received. In terms of the other people accommodations, so this is primarily related to temp accommodations and our debt repayments. So the large driver of the decrease in other people accommodation is the decrease in interest payments that we will be making in 2021-2022 for our debt, and that's because we have a lower principal balance in the upcoming year compared to the current year, and thus pay less interest. In terms of temporary accommodation, so there is an increase of roughly 300,000 related to transportation to Pearson. In terms of the other costs, so you'll see a significant decrease in other costs. So the 5.2 million that was there at revised estimates related to a COVID-19 contingency that we put into place. This was largely due to the stabilization funding that we are receiving from the ministry. So we've removed that contingency as we haven't really needed to tap into that for 2020-2021 due to the school closures. In terms of SGF, as I mentioned on the revenue side, we've equally offset the school-generated fund revenue with expenses. So you'll see here that we're projecting school-generated fund expenses of 5 million to match the revenue of 5 million. So from a board financial or budget purpose, we're net neutral on school-generated funds. But we have reduced both by 2 million based on the trends of the current year. So currently, this year, as of May 31st, we've roughly collected 2.2 million in school-generated funds, and we've spent three, just under 3 million in expenses. And similar to the increase in deferred capital amortization on the revenue side, you can see here that amortization expense is projected to increase for 2021-2022 due to more amortization on increased tangible capital assets for the upcoming year.
So I'm going to look at the actual COVID funding that we have received, or at least that's been allocated to date. So these are all our PPFs. We have about 7.5 million dollars that's been earmarked for our board. And I'm going to go through each one quickly. The safe schools, now it says we're getting about 5.4 million. Only 50% of that 5.4 has been confirmed. This relates back to what I mentioned earlier, that we'll find out if we're going to receive the second allocation or the second 50% sometime in the fall or late fall, depending on what the province's outlook is regarding the global pandemic. Same with our mental health supports, 50% confirmed, about 386,000 of, so 50% of the 386. Spec ed supports, 262,000 has been allocated, half of that's been confirmed. Transportation, 592 has been allocated, 50% confirmed. School operation support, 503 allocated, half of that's been confirmed. And this last one, re-engaging students and reading assessment supports, that is 100% confirmed for the year. So that 360,000 will be received in its entirety for the year. So as mentioned, the ministry has allocated 7.5 million for COVID-19 expenses. However, only 3.9 has been included in our revenue or our budget. So what that means is, in this budget, we've only included the 3.9. We have not included the 7.5 million, only the 3.9 million because that other 3.5 million or 3.6 million or so has not been confirmed to date. So that all depends on whether we're going to receive it or not, depends on what the province's position is with respect to the pandemic in the fall. And just so to remind everyone that this excess revenue is really the main driver or the main contributor to why we have a compliant budget. Now, the next slide, I want to look at the impact. So I mentioned before the revenue that we've been allocated is 7.5 million or so. This amount here, the 3.9, is confirmed. So those first few there, the safe schools, mental health and such, those are all the 50% of the previous slide. And you can see the exception to that, 100% confirmed, is the very last item there, re-engaging students, reading assessment and supports. We've received 100% of that. So for our COVID funding, what's included in our budget is 3.9 million, not the 7.5 million we talked about earlier, only the 3.9. The following items, you can see there is a list of all of our expenditures that we have in our budget that's related to COVID. We have classroom teachers, the virtual school is a big part of that. We still have some computers that we're going to be looking at purchasing, depending on the situation, is in the fall. We also have the school administration for the virtual school. There's a cost for running the virtual school for administrators. We also have the school administration for the virtual school, there's a cost for running the virtual school for administrators. We have some additional transportation for cleaning and such that we've added in for this. As well as school operations and maintenance, so there's about a million dollars or 900,000 or so relating to the cleaning and such and the extra cleaning relating to our schools. So you can see that we have the 3.9 that's included in the budget and we currently have about 5.8 in expenditures for the year. So I want to look at our next few slides, we're going to be looking at our system needs or our needs relating to growth and such. So these first few slides, everyone, these are the additional staff that's required due to the needs of the system. So the first one is a facility manager, now as we know, we're opening new schools, we've been opening a number of new schools over the past few years. So there is a requirement for a additional facility manager relating to all these new schools. And this kind of relates back to one of our survey questions and the importance of maintaining and renewing our schools. Behavioral analyst, we have a behavioral analyst in our budget, again, it's a special education. Expense in the special education envelope. And it's related well to our survey, it's an appendix B, there's some comments in there relating to that, as well as the educational assistance, we've added five EAs to this budget. Again, relating back to the results of our survey back in, I guess that would have been the middle to late February, early March, and I believe that was brought to board on April 6th. That five additional educational assistance was mentioned throughout that survey. We have a ICERT, it turns to special education resource teacher for deaf and hard to hearing. Again, we have one and relates back to our survey results. IT application analyst. This position here relates to our survey question number three and the importance of maintaining and enhancing our IT security. Both this position as well as the IT computer tech position below, work closely with our schools and ensuring that. There is support A, there is support in our schools and B, that a lot of the applications and such are being vetted before and during when they're introduced to our system. So you can see there that the total staffing needs of this budget are 723,000 relating to all these positions here. Non-staffing program enhancements, so you can see there's a few items here as well, so Learn 360 in Britannica. Again, this relates to appendix D of our survey results. What this is is something that the ministry used to cover, used to purchase centrally. They've now given us funding locally, or at least as part of our GSN. To purchase these apps instead of the ministry purchasing them centrally, unfortunately, what our revenue is in that area isn't enough for all of our applications or our. Our online resources we formerly had purchased from the ministry, so there's an additional 31,000 required for that. Online instrument user programs, again, appendix D, there's about 15,000 for that. Continuation of the board records management project, this is something we introduced a few years ago, it's kind of going to a more a scanning process for our system. We're expanding that out further, about 44,000. Power school enhancements, now this is something everyone we've introduced and it should be ready or will be ready for September. We're changing our our school information system or upgrade, not changing, but we're upgrading our school information system to the new power school. So what this does is essentially, it provides a testing server, so we're allowed to go in and test many of the functions. In a test environment before rolling them out to the live environment, which will definitely help the system with respect to. Forecasting any issues with any kind of changes to our power school environment. But it also includes an e-delivery module, so the board materials will be able to be disseminated via an e-delivery model. And again, this kind of relates back as well to one of our survey questions and the sub-theme is providing more technology and IT supports. What this will do is allow us to be able to disseminate information via technology, via an IT environment, via emails and such. Number five, IT security enhancements, again, this relates to the question number three. And it's important for us to maintain and enhance our IT security, 40,000 for that. Those are things like advanced scanning tools to help report or find out threats or misconfigurations of our IT network. As well as shared services with the Educational Computing Network of Ontario, also known as ECNO. Who provides consulting services specifically to the education sector. And finally, an ESL consultant, now I'd like to just make sure we confirm, not confirm, but just inform trustees, this is not a new position. This is just an upgrade from an itinerant, not an upgrade, I don't know if that's the proper word to use, but a change in role from an ESL itinerant to an ESL consultant. And again, that relates back to our survey as well, ESL supports. Our next slide is our program enhancements, so these are items that we've seen to enhance our program, so we have on this one, we have two child and youth counselors. Again, this relates to appendix B in our survey. An ICERT, which is itinerant special education resource teacher, again relating to appendix B of our survey. Special education IT support, so this again is relating to question number seven in our survey and our sub-theme is to provide more technology and IT supports. But this is specifically to the special education department, so they'll have a, there's so much. Information technology now with respect to special education that a actual dedicated special education, not special education, but IT. Personnel is required with a special education focus. And finally, the IT, or not IT, but the one FTE for the STEM consultant. So this was part of our, actually June 3rd or most recent or our earlier meeting this month where we brought forward the. It was at the special board meeting and it was motion number 17521. And it also relates to actually our append or our survey results, appendix C and extracurriculars. So this is having the STEAM consultant allocated to to our complement. And finally, our last slide is just, we've had to add the budget for the parliamentarian, so this came out of a couple of motions in the past year relating to the parliamentarian. So we've added an extra 25,000 or so in our budget to to account for that cost on a going go-forward basis. There's a couple of other items, I'll just mention just quickly, we've actually, we're looking at upgrading the boardroom technology, but we're hoping to do that over the summer to get that updated as well. So that's one other thing I should mention too, that we're looking at bringing our boardroom technology, especially when there's currently no one in our boardroom. Now's the time to kind of look at upgrading it or updating it. So, our board financial position. So looking at our position, maybe I should start by mentioning that our operating reserves or our starting operating reserve. Reflect what we had at revised estimates when we were anticipating using 5.6 million of our operating reserves for our current year budget, so for our 2020, 2021 budgets. As we know, schools have been closed in person learning this year and actually, believe it or not, it's actually been closed a little bit longer than we were closed last year. So I think we were closed about 15 weeks or so this year, last year we were closed about 14 weeks in-person learning. So we're actually anticipating some savings with respect to our current year budget, our 2020, 2021 budget. So really that our surplus should be a little bit higher than what we're forecasting, at least here for our financial position. But for consistency, everyone, we use our values that we had at revised estimates. So right now, we're looking at an in-year change or an in-year deficit. We're looking at about 2.1 million or 2.2 million dollars. Now, to remind trustees, we're still hopefully to receive about 3.6 in additional COVID funding, but again, we won't find that out until. The fall, so that's still something that we're waiting on for the budget. Another thing I should mention too, depending on on what our enrollment looks like in the fall or if enrollment's up further than we forecasted. That will also obviously have an impact on our in-year change. Really, are the revised estimates we want to bring back in December, I think will be a better snapshot as to really what we can look at for this upcoming year. But this is our best guess or our best, and not even guess, I don't like using the word guess, but our best forecast as to to what we see based on the information available at this point in time. I'm going to hand it over to Adam actually now, just to kind of finish up on a couple more slides. Our approved capital and looking at our compliant versus a death or a non-compliant budget, so Adam.
Thanks, Aaron, so one of the pieces that we wanted to highlight to the board is around our capital assets and the impact that. Those have on our our operating surplus or accumulated surplus. In a given year, so you'll know from the earlier slides that we had roughly 19.6 million dollars in deferred capital contributions. That we're taking into revenue related to our tangible capital assets. And on our expenses, we are projecting 21 million in amortization costs, so you can see that there's a gap there of 1.4 million dollars. How do we fund that gap or how do we make up the difference, so it's two-pronged, so we use other. Sources of funding related to capital to offset a portion of it, but anytime the board approves the use of our reserves. For capital projects, that's when we we use our reserves to actually offset this cost, so. What I mean by using our reserves is essentially, you're going to have a component of your financial statements or. In a deficit position, then you utilize those savings that you had from previous years to cover that deficit piece, so. There's always going to be a portion in our board budget related to this gap or this difference that we're related to capital that we're. Using our reserves or savings debt that have been dedicated and internally restricted for capital to cover these costs, so. This next slide just highlights some of the projects in the past that we did have approval to use reserves to cover a portion of. Of those projects and you can kind of see the impact they have on our accumulated surplus balance, so here's the list. Of total, total projects. And you can see the amortization cost for the year that would be covered by reserves is 562,000. And so everybody's seen this slide, I'm sure it's everybody's favorite slide when we talk about our balanced budget requirement. So this slide just kind of reiterates the fact that there's two components, so a perfectly balanced budget. Is when our revenue and expenses net out to zero. A compliant budget is when our expenses exceed our revenue by no more than 1% of our operating provincially. Allocated operating revenue, so in the upcoming year, our projected 1% of operating revenue would be. 3.96 million dollars, and as you could see from two slides ago, we were projecting deficit of 2.2 million dollars, so. We are in a compliant budget, which doesn't require further ministry approval under the Education Act. And this just kind of shows our compliance report as part of our budget filing for the upcoming year, so you can see. We're compliant on our admitting governance portion, as well as you can see that we're compliant. Under the 1% threshold for our operating expenses. So next steps, after today's meeting, we'll take away any kind of comments that we receive from the board of trustees. Integrate them into the budget that we then bring forward to the board for approval next week on June 24th. And now, I guess, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair, to. Open it up for questions.
Thank you, Adam and Aaron. We have on the speaker's list trustee DeRosa, trustee O'Hern Trunata, then vice chair Duarte, trustee DeRosa, you have the four.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, my question is very simple for Adam or Aaron. Can you go back to the previous slide or not the previous slide, but the first slide, and I could illustrate my point very simply that way? Okay, go to the next one. Oh, no. The revenue.
The revenue?
Yeah. So, so what I'm looking at, I'm looking at the columns and the headings, my curiosity is the one is the following one. When you say 2021, 2020, 2021 revised estimates. I'm assuming that this comprises a combination of estimates plus a combination of actual results received, right? Am I correct in assuming that?
These were, so the revised estimates column was the call is the budget that we presented back to the board in December. Based on kind of any modifications that we saw in the first couple of months of the school year. Based on actual kind of results, but primarily related to any enrollment changes or any further funding announcements by. The provincial government, because you recall last year when we were doing this budget, they. They hadn't announced all the people or all the COVID-19 funding yet, so then there was a big change between our original estimates in last July. Versus what we brought forward again in December as our revised estimates in 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 December, so. It it, we'd look at our actuals for September through to, I guess, the end of October realistically. As we prepare the budget to be presented in December, Peter, but it's not like they're not true, it's not a true combination of the two.
All right, so, so I'm just, I'm just looking to clarify so that I can, I can anchor myself as to see what I'm looking at in terms of numbers, so what we're really looking at here. Is the last revision we did to the 2021, 2020, 2021 budget. Okay, which may reflect some actuals and may not reflect some actuals. Versus the new budget that we're presenting for approval next week. Am I correct? Because the actuals for 2020 and 2021 will only materialize when we close the books and the financial statements get issued.
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm not, I'm not looking at actuals here, I'm looking at estimates over estimates, okay? And that's true for revenues and expenses as well. The other curiosity I had, may I have a follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, the other curiosity I have is that we've. Received 3.9 million dollars in COVID funding. And correct me if I'm misstating this, but. And then we spent 5.8 million dollars, so there's a shortage in COVID funding, hopefully still to come. Of roughly. Two, just under 2 million dollars, am I reading that correctly?
I, I'll jump in for this one then, Adam, yes, that's correct, trustee DeRosa.
Okay, so. So we've, we've found. So the the revenue for COVID fund funding is lagging by 2 million dollars, so if these are. I'm wondering whether the, where the other 2 million dollars came from on the expense side. But we are dealing with budgets and not actuals, right, so these are estimates.
That's correct, trustee DeRosa.
So when do we anticipate the the shortfall to come in, is it real or is it the same shortfall that we talked about at the time when? Well, I don't remember exactly the.
Yeah, last summer.
Is it that same shortfall that we talked about at the time when we released the reserves?
That one, trustee DeRosa, I would say that one was more. Confirmed, I guess, we didn't know the allocation per se or what we were going to use that funding for last summer. I think that's the one you're talking about with that extra federal funding that we were getting that was coming through the province, roughly, roughly, I think it was around the same amount, to be honest, about 3.5.
Yeah, well, this is why I'm asking the question, is it the same thing?
No, it's it's different this time in that we're not sure if we're going to receive it or not, that time I was a little more confident we would receive it. This time, it all depends on what the sector's looking like in the fall, so we're supposed to be informed prior to our revised estimate, so. Hopefully in October, November, the ministry will let us know if that second allotment of funding, the 3.6 million or so will flow through to us. That's why, similar to last year, the revised estimates in December will probably give us a better picture. As to really what our true revenue and our two true expenses are going to be for the year. Because there is that unknown, it's just coincidental, but it's roughly the same amount of 3.5 last year and 3.6 this year, but really the intent's a little different on this one.
So trustee DeRosa, you can go back in the queue if you have any additional questions.
I'll do that, I'll do that.
Thank you, trustee O'Hern Trunata, you have the four.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. One of the clarifying questions was that we did have a deficit, I'll be compliant, and then repending the 3.66 million from the government. So you answered that question, may I just make a comment, Mr. Chair?
Certainly.
I, I can see that a lot of work has gone in here. And to have a drop in revenue by 1.5%, but at the same time, a drop in expenses for school support services and non-classroom expenses, revenue drops by 1.5, but you dropped expenses by 6.07%. Well done. Good job.
Thank you, trustee O'Hern Trunata. I'll take credit for that. Vice Chair Duarte, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, I have just a question to, to Mr. Cross. I looked at the last, second but last slide of EFS, which was, we both had one. So I'm looking at the markings in green, and it says compliant, compliant. So question here is, have we already plugged in the numbers into EFS and kind of submitted it as of now? Or is it still in the sandbox there?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Duarte. We, we have entered our preliminary, our draft budget information into EFS in preparation for this budget deliberation. So this is from kind of our sandbox, our unsubmitted EFS forms. But we did run the report to, to show to the board that we are in, in a compliant budget. We are in compliance with our admitting governance threshold as well.
And just to confirm, sorry, if that's okay, Mr. Chair, we have not filed anything with the ministry as of yet. We won't file anything with the ministry until we have board approval on our budget.
Thank you. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
I'll concede, Mr. Chair.
Are there any other questions? If not, I would like to ask a question. So we know that our prime driver of revenue is, is students, student attendance. So we're down. Do we have a sense of where we've lost those students? I'm assuming it's in the younger grades, primarily kindergarten. And if that's the case, would, would we anticipate, or could we anticipate a resurgence or a resurgence and, and see a spike in enrollment?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to you, Mr. Chair. You're correct. It's the JKS K area that we've seen the, the, the drop. And it's a difficult one to forecast because as, as we know, we're not really, there isn't a need to register a child in school until grade one. So really, if the child is being homeschooled, we don't really know if that's the reason why they didn't attend school in JK or SK. One other thing I should mention too, is the ministry was suggesting to all boards that we really shouldn't see an increase in enrollment over revised estimates of more than 1%. That's why if we do see that influx of students, Mr. Chair, we will be able to adjust for that at revised estimates. And you're right, we could see an influx of students at revised estimates, which would give us a better idea where, really where we're at for the, for the fall, or for this upcoming budget year. It's so difficult right now, given that so many unknowns, especially around the enrollment. You, you touched on one of them with the JKS K area and the kindergarten area, being a very difficult one to forecast.
Thank you. Up next, we have trustee Intomasi.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Question on enrollment, since it seems to be pointing that SK, JK is where we're falling short in our projections of enrollment. What percentage of our enrollment consists of JK and SK?
Let me pull that up. Just give me a second. It was in our report in the back. I believe we have that there. So you can see we have the percentage change, JKS K.
It's, it's about 10%.
10% of 36,500 and change? So that's like 3,500 students? That's, so we're impacted by a shortfall of 3,500 in SK alone? JKS K?
No, that's just how much they currently represent. It's not so much an impact of, trustee Intomasi, it's more that that they currently represent about 10% of our current projected enrollment figures. We just unsure as to how much we're going to see that growth year over year in that area. So we're not necessarily saying we're not getting those students. We're just saying that we don't necessarily have the good data on how much, or how much more, if any, we're going to see in an influx of enrollment.
Okay. So let me restate my question. If 10% of our total enrollment speaks to SK and JK, which would be around 3,500 students, is it safe to say that 10% of that would bring us down to the unrealized enrollment for 2020, 2021?
Going back to our original estimates, right back in the, and in, let's say, last year around this time. Well, I can give you an idea right here, trustee Intomasi. So last year, we were expecting about 4,100 or actually about 20, 4,200 JKS K students. This year, we're about 3,900 JKS K students. So for our shortfall in elementary, I believe it was around 500 or so students, 300 of them are in the JKS K line.
All right. But that's still, that's still, sorry, supplementary, Mr. Chair.
Please go ahead.
But that doesn't, still doesn't speak to our overall decline. 300 students less from what we projected last year is far less than nearly 1,500. It would seem to me that we've lost students not in SK, JK. We've lost them right across from JK, right up to, to, to grade 12. So we can't really point to just SK, JK.
I, I don't think we said we lost 1,500 students, trustee Intomasi. We're down about 500 students in the elementary panel, 300 of which are in the JKS K line, compared to where we were at original estimates last June or last July. So really, of the elementary panel, which represents about 2,400 or 23,400 students or so, 300 of our decline in the, in enrollment is in the JKS K line. It's actually, in the board package, it's appendix D that has that information.
Thank you, Superintendent Off. Are there any other questions, trustees? Trustee DeRosa?
Mr. Chair, just, I'm hoping that either Adam or Aaron can explain the addition and subtraction on the balanced budget requirement, just the top line to see. The way I'm reading this, and, and correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, if I'm doing this wrong, is the 446 is added 7 million, 7 million dollars, right? And then line 1.2 is roughly 442 million dollars of expenses. The product of those three numbers, I don't know if I'm doing the addition or the subtraction wrong, but it's not coming out to 2, 2.2. And I don't mean to, it's, I'm doing probably something wrong. Can you walk me through that? I don't mean to verify numbers. It's just a question that's just come up in my head right now. I'm sure I'm doing something wrong.
Sorry, trustee DeRosa, are you talking, you're talking about the balanced budget slide, right? The one that's on the screen right now?
That's right. You know, the first four numbers?
Yeah.
The, the 2 million, the 2 million dollar deficit, or
Yeah.
highlighter in yellow is the product of the three previous numbers, right?
And try to, yeah, the in-year. So we have our in-year revenues of 446 million, and then we have our in-year revenues for land of 7 million. And then our in-year compliance for purposes, it's from a different schedule, which we didn't include all the additional schedules involved to get to this place.
I see. So the 2 million dollars is not the net result of 446 plus 7, less 441? Is that it?
It should be item 1.1 minus item 1.11 minus item 1.2.
Yes. Trustee DeRosa, it's the 446 less the 7. So they don't count our EDC revenue earned as an operating revenue source that we can use, because we have to use it for EDC eligible costs. So they take that from our, our total revenue to bring us down to 439 from the 446. And then the 441 less the 439 gives you that 2.2.
All right. I, I can take this offline. I, thank you. I, thank you for the explanation. I just did a very simple addition and subtraction. And obviously, that's not what the, the answer is. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. And just so everyone knows, everyone, we, this is a direct copy and paste out of EFS. So there's a lot of schedules behind here. You can see even on this, and maybe we, we, I don't know, maybe we should take some of this out. But you can see from schedule 10 ADJ, page 2, line 90. So there's a whole bunch of other schedules in to get this. This is a summary page here. It just confirms whether we're compliant or not. But really, in EFS, there's 200 odd pages of information where all this is pointing to.
Thank you. Trustees, do we have any other questions? Seeing that there are none, I'd like to thank you, Aaron, Adam, and Adam and your team for all the hard work you've done. I know that you were put under the gun from the provincial government. Hopefully, this is not being recorded. I don't want my name to be blacklisted. But your work is definitely appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Moving on to action items, 5.1. We have the policy II-40 bullying prevention and intervention. Trustee Guzzo, could you please read the motion?
I can. Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee that policy II-40 bullying prevention and intervention be, be approved.
Thank you. We have trustee Guzzo as the mover. May I have a seconder?
Trustee Agnew?
Sorry, trustee Agnew. Vice Chair Duarte beat you to it.
No problem.
We'll open the floor for discussions. Are there any trustees who'd like to speak for a second time? Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And I want to thank everyone who's worked on this policy. It's, it is due. It is fantastic. I'm so glad it's finally come to our board. Bullying prevention is key. There is one small minor amendment I'd like to put on this. Mr. Chair?
State your amendment.
Now, I did send it to Rosie, but she doesn't have it. I can read it. And it would be
Again, I think Ms. Swindon has it, but maybe you can meet, read it in the meantime. That will give Ms. Swindon some time to put it up.
Okay. It would be under requirements. It would say, "All secondary students will be supervised inside our schools whenever it is possible during regular school hours."
Okay. And that's a bullet point on its own?
Under requirements. Yes, please.
Under requirements? Okay. I think we, we can't modify this. We have a PDF on the screen, right? So I don't think we can modify that. But the trustees can see it in the, in the chat box. Do we have a seconder for that amendment?
I will second, Mr. Chair.
Seconded by trustee DeRosa. So we'll start a new speakers list for the amendment. Do we, oh, sorry, trustee O'Brien, I cut you off. It's, it's yours to open.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, it's, it's a great policy. And there's just one fine-tuning thing. And I, I personally think we've taken a lot of steps in bullying prevention, educating staff, educating students, making students more assertive, knowing when they're, when they're being attacked, teaching them how to stand up for themselves. And these are steps we must take. At the same time, it's my belief that bullying is much, much reduced in a place where students are supervised. And if you bear with me, Mr. Chair and trustees and staff, I am an, I was an elementary school teacher for 27 years. And based, the culture in an elementary school is one of, once the child lands their feet on the school property, supervision is guaranteed everywhere they go, except of course, places that, where there are privacy issues. And I feel that when that is done, in schools where supervision is maintained, that custody of care is given to students, the bullying goes down. Now, come to high school, there are no doubt students are supervised, but the, there's a drastic, drastic change of supervision. And I, I'm not talking about being helicopter supervisors. I'm just telling about, about eyes present. And it's my belief that if students in secondary schools were supervised in the building, and notice on my amendment, I did say as much as possible, knowing full well that it cannot be done like in elementary school. I just really do believe the bullying in high schools would go down. Now, I know at one time, this was done, teachers did it. I don't know the history of why it left. I'm, I'm sure that it, it could be explained to me. But again, it, I know there also are commissars at high schools. There are other ways they can be supervised. And I just put this a moment forward, amendment forward, and I'm asking my trustees to strongly consider it. And I really do believe it would reduce bullying in high schools. Again, I'm talking about hallways, stairwells, the places where there are no eyes, except the students. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Great. Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. Perhaps just a question for, I have two questions. So perhaps just a question for staff. The first one is, I, I understand that we do use some schools, I'm not sure all, this is a renewed clarification. Do we use any type of cameras or surveillance in some of those areas in the schools, in hallways and, and things like that? That's my first question.
Director Day, who would be best to answer that question?
I, I think I could. Yes, trustee Agnew, in all of our secondary schools, we do have security or video cameras throughout the schools, in all of our secondary schools.
So I don't want to waste a question by clarifying, but could you perhaps give me an indication where we would find those? Just, is it hallways? Would we see them in stairwells? Would we see them? I'm not sure where those would be.
Thanks. Sorry, sorry for the, the brief, the brief response. I'm just, I'm trying to think back of when I was at St. Francis Xavier, because that was a new building. We probably had 50 or 60 cameras odd in the building. So we would have them kind of at the end of hallways, at kind of the layout of hallway, so the camera could look down one end, look down another, in stairwells, in the cafeteria, in the gym, exterior cameras that would point to the parking lot, to the field, maybe either Superintendent Cordero as a more recent secondary principal might be able to add to that. Superintendent Merrick, maybe can give a little bit more detail from a facilities perspective, where, where the layout is. So maybe Anthony, if you could?
Yeah. Thank you, Director Daly, and through you, Mr. Chair. As Director Daly stated, the cameras are situated throughout hallways, stairwells, cafeteria, gymnasium, outdoor, any congregate, or any public spaces where students would congregate and could perhaps be doing something they shouldn't be doing. And that would include bullying or other activities that would be inappropriate. There are no such cameras in any classroom or instructional setting. So none of the tech shops, the library, those spaces would not have the cameras. But pretty much throughout the interior the interior and the exterior of the school.
Trustee Agnew, do you have a follow-up question?
I do. Yeah, thank you, Superintendent Cordero. So again, I don't know who can answer this one, but the other question I would have is if we were to consider trustee O'Brien's amendment, does that impact at all the number of staff that we would need in the schools, or would that impact? Yeah, I think I'm just looking at how that would impact perhaps their daily schedules, the number of staff that we may have in the schools if we're looking to try to increase that supervision. So I'm just wondering what that impact would be from a staffing perspective, were this to be implemented, if somebody might be able to take a shot at that?
Director Daley?
Maybe I'll start. So I guess trustee Agnew, it depends on what we mean by, and I'm not trying to mince words, what we do mean by supervision. So I would argue on change over time, so between periods, as students are going from class to class, there's lots of students in the hall. Our expectation for our secondary teachers would be to be outside of their classroom. They're welcoming kids into the room to start the next period, and they're also a visible presence in the hallway during those busy times that would be supplemented, obviously by cameras in the building. They would probably come into play more during class time, when most of the kids are in school, or sorry, in class, but you know, a handful are going from class to class, or going in the washroom, or going down to the office. Certainly, if we wanted a kind of a physical presence during those periods, you know, contractually, secondary teachers do have, you know, planning supervision time. We tend to use that supervision time to cover classes in the case of absences. So it's a kind of a finite amount of minutes available. So if you take it from the covering absent class to hallway supervision, then there's, you know, something's got to give there. So it could imply, if we were talking about, you know, a physical person there, the implication could be that there might be additional costs related to that. Certainly during the lunch period where kids would congregate in the cafeteria to a large extent, commissioners would be there. Oftentimes, that's when our high schools as well, either our vice principals or principals. It's a way that they kind of make their presence known in the building, get a chance to interact with kids, do kind of a soft supervision, and also to be visible in the building.
Thank you very much, Director Daley.
Thank you. Up next, we have Vice Chair Duarte.
Mr. Chair, question to Secretary Daley. I'm thinking of a place like Mizzou, where we have a village of portables at SFX, and we are 30-plus portables. Is it even feasible to do this in our setting?
Director Daley?
Well, I think I'm assuming that trustee O'Brien is probably talking more about inside the building. Obviously, at our bigger schools, as you've mentioned, you know, we might have 1,000 kids going from the building out to portables and back. That would be really difficult to do. But again, that movement of students between periods, ideally, our classroom teachers who are in portables, you know, there's nothing that's stopping them from being out on the step of the portable, again, welcoming kids into class, but kind of having eyes on as well. Some of that activity would be picked up on camera as well, but obviously, that's a bit of the after, after the fact. Yeah, it would be a bigger challenge there for sure.
Vice Chair Duarte, do you have a follow-up? Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a comment in support of the change, and really, it's only a perceptional support because certainly, I don't have experience in walking the halls of the school. But if I can relate it back just notionally, I think, I think a physical presence could certainly help, even if it's, you know, at peak times and inside the main halls. You know, cameras are useful, but they sort of, you know, it's an after the fact situation. Physical presence, I think, goes the extra step. And my understanding is that the commissioners fulfill a useful role in that sense, and in many other senses as well. So I would gladly support this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other trustees who would like to speak? Director Daley, did you want?
Well, I think it's, I mean, I want to be clear, and I don't think that, I don't think trustee O'Brien's implying there's no supervision right now. It's, we do supervise students in all of our schools in different ways. So it's a little bit unclear to me by inserting this, what the end result change would be, because we do try and maintain safety in our schools through a variety of supervision means. And I know trustee O'Brien's not implying that we're not doing that at secondary, maybe doing it in a different way or an enhanced way.
Thank you. I don't see any other trustees who'd like to speak to this matter, so we'll, oh, trustee O'Hern Trinata?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I was just maybe going to offer up a friendly amendment if I could. Based upon what Director Daley just said, if we said continual commitment to ensuring supervision inside our schools whenever is possible, so say continual commitment to provide supervision whenever it's possible. Add that verbiage to this line, and then it just continues what we're already doing.
Okay, so where would you like to insert that?
Let me scroll up so I can see it in the chat box. Halton Catholic District School Board will provide continual commitment to ensure that secondary students will be supervised inside our schools whenever it's possible during regular school hours. Did I say that fast enough?
I think Ms. Swindon caught it. Let's go to that chat box. So, okay, so as it is, so as it is written, so trustees can look into the chat box and see that, so this is a secondary amendment. We'll have a new speakers list. Oh, sorry, can I get a seconder for this secondary? Once trustee O'Hern Trinata turns off her microphone for her laptop. Perfect, so that was seconded by Vice Chair Duarte. Trustee O'Hern Trinata, you have the floor to speak to this matter?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I really don't have much to say. I think I do, so we'll leave it at that.
Okay. Do we have anybody that would like to speak to this? Any questions? Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I would very much welcome this friendly amendment. I think it even says it better than what I said. I have a quick question for Director Daley. Director Daley, my world was never the secondary world, so I really don't know it very well. But question, was there a time when there was a greater expectation on teachers to supervise in those in-between times, the times you mentioned, from going to class to class, stairwells? Was there a time where there was a greater expectation? And if so, how did that change? Thank you.
Director Daley?
Thank you. Yeah, there was a time where teachers would be allocated those types of supervision minutes, certainly in my time when I was a classroom teacher. I think trustee O'Brien, the focus of that use of supervision minutes shifted more to on calls, to covering classes, as opposed to having them covered all the time by occasional teachers, probably with the advent of the increased use of cameras and the addition of commissioners. Again, from a collective agreement perspective, there's only, there's so many minutes that are allocated for supervision or on calls. So you do need to kind of determine what that split is going to be at the school level. Yeah, so I think that would probably explain why there's been that shift.
Trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow-up?
A follow-up comment, if you don't mind. And I want to respond to a comment that trustee Agnew said about cameras. I think cameras have really brought down bullying. I mean, kids see the camera. I think they are very much aware of that they're there, that they're being watched. And I think they're great. I'm not sure if they really replace a teacher's eyes, and also a teacher's ears. A lot of the bullying I experienced in high school was verbal, and it was in high schools, usually stairwells. I don't know if a camera would capture that. And again, I guess again, coming from the elementary world where kids supposedly are supervised all the time, if there's not a will for this, I can accept that. I feel that something should be said, and I do believe that when there is some kind of supervision, that bullying does go down. You've heard me said that. Trustees, think for yourselves. If you think in your high school, a teacher would have, a closer teacher may have prevented bullying, or he may have experienced or seen it, I don't know, please consider that in your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other trustees who would like to speak to the secondary amendment? Seeing that there's none, trustee O'Hern Trinata, you can close.
I'll close.
Thank you for that summary. We'll take this to a recorded vote, so please keep in mind that we're voting just on the secondary amendment, which is the addition of a continual commitment to. Is that correct? Yes, Mr. Chair. So we will go to a recorded vote. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa? Vice Chair Duarte? Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
We'll come back to trustee Antamasi. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trinata?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly? Come back to trustee Kelly. Trustee Rajdi?
In favor, Chair. Sorry, I had mic issues. This is curious about.
No, no problem at all. Trustee Rajdi? We'll come back to trustee Rajdi. Trustee Antamasi? Can we see if trustee Antamasi's online?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, trustee DeRosa?
I may want to reconsider this vote if we're not going back to the original suggestion of trustee O'Brien.
So, yeah, right now, we're voting strictly on the secondary amendment, and then if this passes, it would become the amendment, which we would then vote on. So if you would like to reconsider your vote, you have time.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll vote in favor.
Okay, thank you. One last call for trustee Antamasi. No, I don't see him. Trustee Rajdi, one last call. Trustee Murphy's in favor, so the secondary amendment passes. Okay, so now we are going to the amendment, which essentially is, now we're voting on the entire statement in the chat box, not just the area that was highlighted. Do we have? So that was moved by trustee O'Brien, so trustee O'Brien could close on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think we're back to now just passing the policy. Sorry, according to clarification, because his amendment was changed and it's passed.
Well, we voted on just the secondary amendment, so now we have to vote on the entire. I'll ask a parliamentarian, Kapoor, for his.
Which then it's my motion.
Parliamentarian Kapoor? Does that have your advice?
Yes, Chair, you have it correct. What you just voted on was the, what's in the chat box, the blue and the strikeout. So now you have trustee O'Brien's amendment as amended, and you have to, the board would now cast judgment on whether to add this, the amendment into the policy.
So just to clarify, if we're voting, if this vote passes, then that becomes the motion as amended? Do we have to have another vote as it becomes the main motion as amended?
Right now, you're voting on trustee O'Brien's amendment? If trustee O'Brien's amendment is adopted, then you would go back and vote on the entire, on the motion that's on the PDF with the amendment.
Okay. So hopefully, that's clear to all trustees. We're voting, if you look in the chat box, you can see what we're voting on specifically right now. We'll go to trustee DeRosa?
I'm in favor of trustee O'Brien's amendment.
Vice Chair Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor, but confused.
Trustee Antamasi? We'll come back, trustee Antamasi. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trinata?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Rajdi? Come back, trustee Rajdi. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Last call, trustee Antamasi. Last call, trustee Rajdi. Trustee Murphy's in favor, so the amendment carries. So now we will vote on the motion as amended. Is that correct, Parliamentarian Kapoor?
Yes, Chair.
So if you look in the chat box, highlighted in either rose or orange, depending on your level of color blindness, is what we're voting on, the motion as amended. Vice Chair Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Antamasi? Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trinata?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Rajdi? Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Trustee Antamasi, last call. Trustee Rajdi, last call. Trustee Murphy's in favor, so the motion carries. We will go on to item 5.2. Policy II-34, reimbursement of board business expenses for trustees and external members. Trustee Guzzo, would you please read the motion?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee that policy II-
that policy I dash thirty-four B reimbursement of board expense, board business expenses for trustees and external members of board committees be approved.
Thank you. The motion was moved by trustee Guzzo. May I have a seconder?
Trustee Agnew?
Trustee Agnew? Any discussion? Excuse me. No discussion. We'll call for recorded votes. Uh, sorry, trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, just had a question of clarification. Are we, uh, have we checked whether the amounts or limits uh, are up to date with, uh, the most recent, uh, ministerial, uh, guidelines?
Uh, would, would that be for superintendent Lofts? Superintendent Lofts, are you able to answer that question?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, well, that depends, uh, trustee DeRosa. There's a guideline that's in effect for part broader public sector directive. Uh, it's from twenty twenty and it gives it a meal allowance. Um, our total for meal allowance does differ from, from that, but again, that was a meal allowance guideline um, for an entire public sector travel meal hospitality expense directive. Um, with respect to things like mileage and such, we use a CRA published rate, uh, which I believe right now is fifty-nine cents per kilometer. Um, so I don't know if that answers your question or not.
So maybe a point of clarification, uh, Mr. Chair, maybe just to simplify the question.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Um, I'll, I'll give you a very practical example, okay? Uh, so assuming that our trustee, um, limit is three thousand dollars, okay? Have we verified that, that that limit doesn't, is up to date and has not been in fact increased to four or five or whatever that may be? That's all. That's all I'm asking.
Superintendent Lofts?
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, again, this is a policy trustee DeRosa. It's up to the trustees to decide on the, the rate. Uh, one thing I will remind trustees, um, is that um, the pure cost that's associated with all the additional trustee-related expenditures um, does exceed the five thousand dollars per individual trustee amount. And I think that might be what you're referring to trustee DeRosa, when you say, is it up to date? Uh, it's up to date as far as what the trustees have approved in the past. So I bet that will be my response.
I, I, um, I will accept that, Mr. Chair, but very, very simply stated, let's make sure we're getting everything that's coming to us. That's all. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Do we have any other, um, trustees who would like to speak on this matter? If not, we'll go to a recorded vote. So seeing that there's none, we'll go to record a vote. Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi? Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien? Trustee O'Brien? Come back to trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Hern Tronata?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Rashdi? Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
I'm gonna abstain, Mr. Chair.
Uh, vice chair Duarte? Uh, trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
And trustee Murphy's in favor.
Mr. Chair, I'm here. Uh, which item are we on?
We're on item five point two, trustee, uh, reimbursement of board business expenses for trustees.
Against.
Yes, thank you. So motion carries. Moving on to item five point three, policy I forty, performance appraisal of the Director of Education. Uh, trustee Guzzo, could you please speak to the motion?
I can. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that policy I dash four zero, performance appraisal of the Director of Education be approved.
Can I have a seconder?
Trustee Agnew?
Seconded by trustee Agnew. Uh, discussion, vice chair Duarte, you have the floor.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. This, uh, policy was due to be discussed and approved, uh, sometime back, but unfortunately we have not uh, been able to get to it. However, at this fine time, uh, we have done the director approval appraisal. And so I'd like to move that we, we move, we move a motion that we move this policy back to the Policy Committee in order to do a three sixty, uh, review and discussion.
So you're moving a motion to refer, uh, the policy back to the Policy Committee? Okay.
Uh, I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Carabella. Uh, you have, you have the floor, uh, trust, uh, vice chair Duarte?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have a point of order. Um, can you please explain to me? So we move to, we have a mover and a seconder. And now we have vice chair Duarte putting a motion to amend?
No, he's putting a motion to refer it to policy.
Uh, but I don't understand. How does that follow what we're doing? Please explain it to me.
What would you like me to explain? Trustees have various options when they're presented with action items and trustee, um, vice chair Duarte has uh, chosen to move a motion to defer.
All right. So we have a motion on the table by vice chair Duarte to refer this back to policy.
Is that's your request? Yes, that's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Thank. Uh, vice chair Duarte, you have the floor.
Uh, sorry, Mr. Chair. The changes in this, uh, policy were in the appendix and was very, uh, minor in detail. However, since we have not got to implement it, there's no point in, uh, in, uh, in approving this policy. It might as well go back to the Policy Committee and do a wholesome review of the trustees were in favor of doing a three sixty, I'm, as I understand. So it's just logical that we send it back and, uh, and, and policy deals with it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I have another point of order.
What's your, what's your point of order?
My point of order is we're dealing with an item that's already been completed. You're now talking out about a policy. They're two separate items. They can be co-joined together.
Uh, we're, what is in front of us was a motion. And, uh, trustee, uh, vice chair Duarte has moved the motion to refer it back to policy. Uh, parliamentary Kapor, trustee Antomasi, I'm ruling. Parliamentary Kapor, can I have your, uh, opinion on this matter?
Uh, yes, Chair. Uh, this is in order, a motion to refer. Uh, you can refer back to the same committee. I understood, or I thought I heard vice chair Duarte make a, uh, also include some instructions for the committee uh, in terms of the reference to the three sixty, but I wasn't, but that wasn't clear. But the motion to refer is in order, uh, for this policy.
Well, we'll ask vice.
By law ten six.
Vice chair to, uh, Duarte, to, to clarify what his, uh, motion to refer is. Vice chair Duarte?
The motion to ref, I was only to refer and although I had the comment, it was not part of the motion. So it's just a motion to refer.
Okay. So, so we have, we're moving a motion to refer this, uh, policy back to our Policy Committee. Uh, therefore I, I, I don't take your, um, point of order and good standing, uh, vice chair Antomasi. Uh, is there any trustees who would like to speak to this?
Has it been seconded, Mr. Chair?
Yes, trustee Carabella, seconded.
All right.
Seeing that there's, uh, no one who wishes to speak, uh, vice chair Duarte, you can close, or we can go to a recorded vote if you don't have anything further to say.
I have nothing further to say, so I close.
Thank you. Trustee Antomasi, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Tronata? Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Rashdi? Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Vice chair Duarte? Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy's in favor. The motion carries. Moving on to item five point four, policy II twenty-six, managing student risk in interschool sports, elementary and secondary. Trustee Guzzo, could you please read the motion?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that policy II dash two six, managing student risk in interschool sports, elementary and secondary school be approved.
Thank you. The motion was moved by trustee Guzzo. Can I have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Trustee O'Hern Tronata, a seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion for the, uh, second time? Seeing that there are no questions, we'll move to a recorded vote. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien? Trustee O'Brien? Come back to trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Hern Tronata?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Rashdi? Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Trustee, vice chair Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Uh, trustee Antomasi? Trustee Antomasi? We'll come back. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi? Trustee Murphy's in favor. Motion carries. Moving on to item five point five. Policy II twenty-nine, inclusion and range of placement options for identified exceptional students. Trustee Guzzo, could you please read the motion?
Yes, I thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that policy II dash two nine, inclusion and range of placement options for identified exceptional students be approved.
Motion was moved by trustee Guzzo. Do we have a seconder?
Trustee Agnew?
Seconded by trustee Agnew. Any discussion? Uh, trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I had a, a question about this policy, uh, about placements, uh, maybe to superintendent Ballot. Um, so so this policy explains all the placements and I'm, I'm wondering, what is the best way for, to add a placement at Halton Catholic District School Board? So if a parent or an association at CAC wanted to add a placement that somehow isn't being provided right now at Halton Catholic, what is the process to ask for a placement and to, to, um, yeah, the process procedure for asking for a placement and achieving that?
Superintendent Ball?
Sure. And through you, through you, Mr. Chair, I would say that the appropriate process would be to bring a, um, an association report could come through CAC. The request for a staff report, if we look at the staff report that was completed, uh, with respect to the gifted plus class in two thousand nineteen, there was a request at that time for a staff report, which was presented to the, uh, Board of Trustees at that time and it was received as information. So it, it would be upon the Board of Trustees ultimately, if there are going to be any costs associated with adding a placement and it would be brought to the board, um, as an information and subsequently an action item if it went in that direction. Um, the staff do work with CAC and we've had some very fulsome conversations and, um, welcome association reports to review any placement options that need to be considered. And we also consider being aligned with the ministry and the guidance and the expectations from the Ministry of Education.
Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, thank you for that. Um, was there any, um, in, in your memory or in the history now of, of Halton Catholic of uh, a placement being added on as a recommendation of CAC?
Um, through you, Mr. Chair. I wouldn't know that information. Um, trustee Carabella, I've been in, in this portfolio for this year and I'm not aware of it, um, coming to fruition through CAC. I know that, um, trustee Agnew has been part of CAC for a number of years. Um, but as far as I'm aware, uh, I don't know if that has occurred.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And, Mr. Chair, I'd like to, um, um, add, add an amendment, an extra bullet to this policy right at the very end. And it's really just a bullet, uh, just an additional, uh, clarification for any, uh, parents. And I think it would just help them see what placements are available. So, um, I just wanted to add this, um, this amendment.
Okay.
That would, so it'd be on the last page. I don't know if you want to scroll to that.
Yes, we'll try and we'll get to that.
It's, yeah, so it'd be the last bullet under requirements. Um, because it, it outlines all the placement options. And just to, to help, I'll just say what it is. Okay, so it would say, to, uh, for a listing of placements available at HCDSB, please see the HCDSB Special Educational Plan. And then just a hyperlink to the plan. And that's it. Just, just for clarification and easy access for parents.
Okay, can we have a seconder for that amendment?
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee O'Brien. Uh, trustee Caro, uh, trustee Carabella, you have the, uh, the floor to open.
Okay, thank you. It's very, very brief. As I say, it's really just, uh, a, a way to make things easier. It's just clarifying. I'm not really, um, changing anything or just adding an easy way that parents who have had their child identified, maybe they're searching through the policies. And this will give them an, a very easy way to just get to the special educational plan uh, that outlines all the placements that are available at Halton Catholic. That's it.
Uh, thank you. Director Daley, did you have, uh?
I, I just wanted to note that the, the link to the, uh, the Spec Ed Annual Plan is in the reference section, uh, as well. Just so trustees are aware of that.
Uh, thank you. Uh, trust.
May I speak to that? Just, I, I do realize that. And I guess this one would link to the page that has the, uh, chart with the different placements.
Uh, thank you for that clarification. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And, uh, either just a question to superintendent Ballot, or it might be to Andrea. Um, can, can you comment on where parents concurrently find that information on our website with respect to placement options? Uh, I know that it can be found outside of, um, outside of this policy. I think there's another area there under our website where it can be found.
Superintendent Ball, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. We do have all of the information on our public board website and we have also linked all of our documents with respect to parent guides. There's extensive information there. And, uh, we're also in the process of updating some of that information, as you're aware, but everything is there. And as Director Daley pointed out, we did include a link to the. And as Director Daley pointed out, we did include a link to the Special Education Plan in this document as well and certainly the information is located there with respect to the placement options that we offer.
Trustee Guzzo, do you have a follow-up?
No, but Trustee Agnew does.
Oh, sorry. Like you made it this far without doing it.
One is blonde, one is dark haired, short, tall. I just, so, yeah, just, I mean, I'm always in favor of making things easier for families to find, you know, obviously coming from this place myself as a parent. But I feel like if, you know, policy is probably the most difficult place for someone. If a parent has to go right to the policy to find this information, then we're not making this easy to put. So I appreciate the fact that it can be found in other ways on our site. I think it's probably an easier way to navigate and again, if the only way for a parent to find out placement options or range of placement is via searching through a policy to find it, I think we probably have a bigger problem, so, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I was just gonna, my question is, this policy was, was it already, and I think it's to Superintendent Ballot, is, was this policy already vetted through CAC for feedback?
Superintendent Ballot, you have the floor.
Thank you and through you, yes, it was vetted through CAC. It was vetted at two separate meetings. It was vetted at the March 22th CAC meeting as well as the April 19th meeting. And if I could just add on to the last question that Trustee Agnew asked about, we also have a parent guide and I failed to mention that. When a student is identified, the parent does receive a parent guide that outlines the information with respect to the placement options that we offer.
Trustee Guzzo, do you have a follow-up?
I, it's more of a comment, I would just say that, yeah, everything that Trustee Agnew asked and what Superintendent Ballot just made reference to is, I think those are probably easier references for our parents, especially when they are looking or new to a placement option as opposed to it being lost in a policy. I don't find that a majority of our parents reference the policies per se. They're looking for a quick reference, so I think, I think it might just be lost and thank you.
Vice Chair Duarte, you have the floor.
So Chair, just a comment, yeah, so this is a policy. So I'm not sure whether we need the word please in there. So policy is we're telling people to do something. So in that particular amendment, the word please is the please see, we don't need to tell some, please see, we're telling directing people. So that's my first comment. Second thing is, I'm not sure we really need to have these links in multiple places. It's difficult to maintain such links should something change in the future. So, so I have a little concern about that, Mr. Chair. What's your comment?
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you through, Mr. Chair, just a comment. I think the more links you put, the better, it's just easier to get to. I know it's hard to maintain them maybe, but often, things are hard to find, so I will support this because I think, again, the more links, the better, it'll get the parents there faster without having to waste time navigating. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm just wondering what's the harm, so I'll be, I'll be supporting it, okay, thank you.
Thank you, do we have anybody else who'd like to speak to it? If not, we'll allow Trustee Carabella to close. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor to close.
Thank you, so I think that's the main point, is it's just another reference point, it's easier. I don't think it's a big ask. It doesn't undercut or undermine any other places that we have this information. So I would ask it to be supported as just one extra way to provide information. Thank you.
Thank you, so we will go to a recorded vote on the amendment only, which is the addition of the, what's in the chat box?
And, Mr. Chair, just a point of clarification, absolutely take out the word please. I, I, I take it to what Trustee Duarte said, makes sense that, just to make it clear that here it is.
Okay. You can remove that. So we'll go to a recorded vote on the amendment, Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trunata.
Sorry, in favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trunata, who's a microphone, happy, in favor, Trustee Guber.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Roasty. We'll take Trustee Roasty off the list for the night, Trustee Agnew.
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa.
In favor.
Vice Chair Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo.
Opposed.
Trustee Antomasi.
Mr. Chair, I think Trustee Antomasi is having technical difficulties.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy's in favor, the amendment carries. So now we will go back to the main motion as amended. And we'll call a recorded vote. Make a note here to myself, Trustee O'Hern Trunata.
In favor.
Trustee Guber.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly. Trustee Kelly. Come back to Trustee Kelly, Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa.
In favor.
Vice Chair Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi. Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
And Trustee Murphy's in favor, Trustee Kelly.
In favor, thank you, Chair.
No problem, Trustee Antomasi will try. So I'm difficulty, so the motion as amended carries. Moving on to item 5.6, Policy II-33, Safe Arrival at School Program. Trustee Guzzo, could you please read the motion?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee that Policy II-33, Safe Arrival at School Program be approved.
Thank you, the motion is moved by Trustee Guzzo, may I have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Trustee O'Hern Trunata. Any discussion? Seeing that there is no discussion, we can move to a recorded vote. Trustee Guber.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa.
Favor.
Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi.
Trustee. Ladies, Mr. Chair, Trustee Antomasi has texted me saying that he texted you, I'm not sure if you received it.
I have lots of levers going, so I don't look at my phone during a meeting. There's other, there's other administrative people that Trustee Antomasi can converse with. I can't help him with technical difficulties during a, during a meeting. Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
Favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trunata.
In favor.
Vice Chair Duarte.
Sorry, you're voting on this?
We're voting on item 5.6, which is Policy II-33, Safe Arrival at School Program.
In favor.
And Trustee Murphy's in favor, Trustee Antomasi. Still having technical difficulties, motion carries. Moving on to item 5.7, Policy II-43, Voluntary Confidential Self-Identification of First Nations, Métis, and Inuit Students. Trustee Guzzo, would you please read the motion?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee that Policy II-43, Voluntary Confidential Self-Identification of First Nation, Métis, and Inuit Students be approved.
Thank you, the motion is moved by Trustee Guzzo, do we have a seconder?
O'Brien.
Seconded by Trustee O'Brien. Any discussion? Seeing that there's none, we'll move to a recorded vote. Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa.
In favor.
Vice Chair Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi. Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trunata.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy's in favor also, oh, sorry, Trustee Guber.
In favor.
Motion carries. Moving on to item 5.8, Policy II-46, Correspondence to the Board of Trustees. Trustee Guzzo, could you please read the motion?
I can, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee that Policy II-46, Correspondence to the Board of Trustees be approved for first reading.
Do we have a seconder? Vice Chair Duarte. Any discussion? Seeing that there is no discussion, we'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa.
In favor.
Vice Chair Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi. Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trunata.
In favor.
Trustee Guber.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
And Trustee Murphy's in favor, so motion carries.
Thank you, sorry, Chair Murphy, I just want to remind all trustees that as this is the first reading, it'll go out tomorrow for stakeholder feedback.
Great, thank you. Moving on to item 5.9, Policy II-11, Student, International Student Admission Requirements, Fee-Paying Students, Trustee Guzzo, could you please read the motion?
I can, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee that Policy II-11, International Student Admission Requirements, Fee-Paying Students be approved.
Thank you, the motion is moved by Trustee Guzzo, Guzzo may have a seconder.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Trustee O'Hern Trunata, any discussion? Seeing that there's no discussion, we'll go to a recorded vote, Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa.
In favor.
Vice Chair Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi. Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trunata.
In favor.
Trustee Guber.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly. Trustee Kelly, well, thank you, Trustee Murphy's in favor, so motion carries. Item 5.10, Policy II-23.
Sorry, may I have a point of privilege?
Yes, which is wonderful.
Sorry, it's just, Mr. Trustee Antomasi is texting me as well, I guess, that he's trying to, he's had lots of connectivity issues and it's regarding that you asked him to text the vote, so, but to where should he be texting?
I did not, so I did not ask Trustee Antomasi to text anything. Prior to the beginning of this meeting, I informed Trustee Antomasi that there is a phone number on the team's meeting that he can call from a landline. So we are now regarding item 5.10, Policy II-23, Catholic School Councils and Catholic Parent Involvement Committee. Trustee Guzzo, could you please read the motion?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee that Policy II-23, Catholic School Councils and Catholic Parent Involvement Committee be approved.
The motion was moved by Trustee Guzzo, may I have a seconder?
Seconding O'Brien.
Vice Chair Duarte, beat you to it, Trustee O'Brien, discussion? Seeing that there is no discussion, we'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee DeRosa.
I'm gonna abstain.
Vice Chair Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo.
Opposed.
Trustee Antomasi.
Favor.
In favor, thank you, Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trunata.
Opposed.
Trustee Guber.
I'll abstain.
Trustee Kelly.
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew.
Opposed.
And Trustee Murphy is opposed, so we have a tie 4-4, the motion does not carry. Moving on to item 5.11, Policy V-80, V-08, School Anniversary Celebrations. Trustee Guzzo, could you please read the motion?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee that Policy V-08, School Anniversary Celebrations be approved.
The motion is moved by Trustee Guzzo, may I have a seconder? Vice Chair Duarte, any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt, Trustee Antomasi has a point of order. Here it is.
The point of order stems from the fact that you said it's a 4-4 vote. However, there are nine of us, an abstention is considered a no vote. Please refer this matter to the parliamentarian.
So first I will rule on that because that is, that is how points of order work. So my ruling is that your point is not in order because an abstention does not count as a no vote. I will ask Parliamentary Karpur for his opinion on that matter.
This guy for real?
Yes, yes, he actually is for real. Your disrespect, your disrespect, enough, Trustee Antomasi, your disrespect, Trustee Antomasi, you're out of order for the second time. Your disrespect for the chair will not be tolerated. Whether you respect me personally or not, I really don't care. You will respect the position of the chair and the authority of the chair. Trust, Parliamentary Karpur, can I have your opinion? Because I am for real, so that's, that's why I would like your opinion.
Yes, Chair, an abstention is not a vote. It has, in the circumstance where a motion needs to be passed by a majority of all trustees present and eligible, it has the same effect as a no vote, but it is not a vote. The effect is the same, but it is different.
So therefore, in the case where we have, uh, four votes for and four votes against with one abstention, would that motion carry or would it fail?
Um, it, it is defeated. You need a majority in favor and either way, uh, that, that motion is defeated.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
No, the point of order is, I am ruling on a point of order, so nobody else is speaking except the chair. So I will take the advice of Parliamentary Kippur and rule that, uh, as my original motion, uh, my original ruling is that, uh, the motion is defeated.
Mr. Chair.
All right, so I have a subsequent point of order.
You do not have the floor, trustee Antomasi. You do not have the floor. You have not gone through the proper procedures to be recognized. That is your third and final, that is your third and final warning. You're being removed from this meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Trust, trustee DeRosa, if you wish to have the floor, you have to be recognized by putting your hand in the chat box.
It's right there, Mr. Chair.
I'm looking at the chat box. Well, now, now it's there now. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I, um, I'd like to simplify this conversation if, uh, you'll allow me.
So trustee, trustee DeRosa, there is nothing to simplify. You either have a point of order or you have a point of privilege. We're in the, in the middle of doing business of the board, which was to vote on policy, on vote on item five point one. So please state your point of privilege.
I will have a point of privilege on the basis that we've had precedence over this. I will change my vote.
Point of order.
It's, you, you cannot, it's been recorded. There is, you cannot change your vote.
Do a motion to reconsider.
Okay. Why are we not following the procedures of this meeting? If you would like to appeal the ruling of the chair, then you state that. We are not going to allow people to keep talking out of order. The chair has ruled. The chair's ruling is final, subject to appeal.
I appeal the ruling of the chair.
Okay. We will take that to a recorded vote.
Can you just clarify?
So my ruling was that trustee DeRosa cannot change his vote. That is appealed, so if you, if you vote in favor of the appeal, then trustee DeRosa can change his vote.
And point of privilege, I'd like a parliamentary opinion on that, please.
Uh, Parliamentary Kippur, can you, uh, provide your opinion on my statement?
Um, yes, Chair. Uh, the, according to Robert's rules, a vote may be changed until the moment that the chair announces the result, after which it would require unanimous consent. Um, so, uh, the chair has declared the result of the vote. Uh, and that, so that time ended.
Thank you. Trustee Guzzo, how do you vote on the appeal?
Opposed.
Trustee Antomasi? Oh, sorry, trustee Antomasi is no longer in the meeting. Trustee Carabella?
I, I, I'm confused because I have a, I have a point of, point of privilege for the, I don't know if it's point of privilege or, um, like what about a motion to reconsider?
So right now, we're dealing with an appeal. That's the only thing that is on the table.
Okay, so when, so I agree with the rules that once the vote has been.
Okay, so you're opposed to the appeal.
Hmm.
Okay, thank you. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trunata?
Opposed.
Uh, trustee Guber?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair Duarte?
Opposed.
And trustee Murphy is opposed, so the appeal fails. Ruling stands. We're moving on to item five point eleven, policy, oh, sorry, we already have it seconded. Any discussion on this policy? Seeing that there's no discussion, we'll go to a recorded vote. Vice Chair Duarte?
Um, Chair, sorry, I'm the last here.
We're, we're addressing policy five point one-one, uh, sorry, item five point one-one, Policy V oh-eight, School Anniversary Celebrations.
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
I'll go.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trunata?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
Mr. Chair, can I make a motion to reconsider?
We're, we're in the middle of a vote on five eleven, so you cannot make a motion to reconsider a vote on five eleven. How do you vote?
Come back to me.
You're the last one.
I'm opposed.
Trustee Murphy's in favor. Motion carries. Moving on.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, trustee DeRosa.
Can I have a parliamentary, uh, opinion on that, please? On my motion to reconsider?
Uh, you are not on the, uh, since you, you are abstained, you are not on the prevailing side, and I'll ask Parliamentary Kippur for his opinion on that ruling.
I'm not on the winning side either, or the-
Trustee DeRosa? Trustee DeRosa?
I'm not, I'm not on your side.
You are out of order. You do not have the floor.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee DeRosa, this is your second warning. You are out of order. I've asked for the parliamentarian's opinion. He should be the only one speaking at this moment. Parliamentarian Kippur?
Yes, Chair. Um, as you stated, the requirement is that the person who moves reconsideration be on the prevailing side. Uh, someone who abstained is not on the prevailing side.
Thank you.
A point of privilege, Mr. Chair.
Yes, trustee O'Brien?
I'd like to get a vote count on, um, policy, the vote, who voted what on? Um, policy of five, I dash twenty-three.
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
Um, yes, uh, yes, trustee.
Wouldn't that information be contained in the minutes later on, Mr. Chair?
I have a point of-
Yes, so trustee O'Brien. Let me state this very clearly. Let me state this very clearly for all trustees. I will not allow crosstalk. I will not allow side debate. You will all have a chance to speak if you follow the proper procedures. I will gladly recount the vote for trustee O'Brien.
Thank you.
So trustee Agnew opposed, trustee DeRosa abstained, vice chair Duarte in favor, uh, trustee Guzzo opposed, trustee Antomasi in favor, trustee Carabella in favor, trustee O'Brien in favor, trustee O'Hern Trunata opposed, trustee Murphy opposed, trustee Guber abstained, trustee Kelly opposed.
Thank you.
We're now moving on to item five point twelve, Policy V twelve, Blessing and Official Opening of New Schools. Trustee Guzzo, could you please read the motion?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee that policy V dash one-two, Blessing and Official Opening of a New School be approved.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. May I have a seconded?
I'll second it.
Trustee Agnew, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Seconded by trustee O'Hern Trunata. We'll open up the floor for discussion. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, it's just a point of privilege. I'd like to involve, please.
What is your point of privilege, trustee DeRosa?
Mr. Chair, I, um, I don't feel that this debate or this process is properly balanced. Um, I know that you are, you have a difficult position and that you need to control the debate, but you also have a responsibility to balance it on both sides. And I don't feel that that is happening, Mr. Chair. I find it very difficult to continue on, uh, with this meeting, knowing that, um, the, the balancing of the debate, the following of the rules are not somewhat, um, being applied properly. Um, that's my point of privilege. And I, I find, Mr. Chair, I would appreciate if I, I'm allowed to finish. Um, and I respectfully ask, ask for that to happen. If I'm, uh, if I'm prevented from, um, speaking, if I'm prevented from, if, effectively, if I'm beaten up into a corner, um, in order to try to represent my constituents, that's a problem. So I, I need to express that very, very clearly, and I will cede my place, Mr. Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you for your, uh, your opinion and your expression. I will now rule on your point of privilege, which is not in order. You, as all trustees, in my opinion, are being treated equally and fairly. All trustees will follow the rules. All trustees will follow the proper procedures. This is year three of being involved in this organization. We've gone through the PD sessions. I've sent out multiple, multiple, uh, emails on housekeeping and rules and procedures, and trustees still persist to ignore them. So I do appreciate your sentiment. I will internalize that and make sure that I'm applying things fairly. However, I rule against your point of privilege. We're moving on to item five point one-two. Recall a recorded vote. Trustee Carabella? Trustee Carabella? Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Oh, thank you. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trunata?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Vice Chair Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy's in favor. Motion carries. Item five point thirteen, Policy V thirteen, Blessing and Redaction of Major Additions to a School. A rededication, sorry, not redaction. Yet I'm getting a little punchy, as you can tell. Uh, trustee Guzzo, could you please, uh?
Mr. Chair, would you spare us the, the sarcasm, please?
Point of order.
Trustee, trustee DeRosa, trustee DeRosa, you are out of order for the third and final time. I'm ruling for you to leave the meeting. Trustee Guzzo, please read the motion.
Sorry about that. Um, yes, be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee that policy V thirteen, Blessing and Rededication of a Major Addition to a School be approved.
Thank you. The motion was moved by trustee Guzzo. Could I have a seconded?
Seconded, O'Brien.
Sorry, vice chair Duarte, beat you to it. Uh, any discussion? Seeing that there's no discussion, we'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trunata?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Uh, vice chair Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy's in favor. Motion carries. We are at, there is no correspondence. Um, do we have, do we have to go back into motion, into in camera? Correct? We had a motion on the table.
Correct.
Okay. So may I have a motion to move back in camera?
Trustee Agnew?
Moved by, the Agnew, seconded by?
I can second, uh, Mr. Chair, trustee Guzzo.
Trustee Guzzo, okay, so if you can all leave this link and move back into in camera?
Don't, don't we blow that?
Mr. Chair, point of privilege? Are, are you saying that a point of privilege for the in camera? Is trustee Yan Tomasi and trustee DeRosa allowed back in the in camera?
Uh, that is, that's a good question, so we'll have to, uh, I'll have to ask Parliamentarian Kippur for his opinion on that matter.
Uh, Chair, uh, this meeting is one meeting. Um, parts of it are in camera, but it is one meeting. Would be my advice.
Uh, my second question is, do we have to have a vote to go back in camera? Or just, do we need just a mover and a seconded? I'm assuming then if we have a mover and a seconded, we have to have a vote also. Is that correct?
I, uh, I agree with that, yes.
Okay, so this is a vote to go back, uh, into, um, in camera. Trustee O'Brien?
Okay, just one question. I'm just understanding, parliamentarian, so the two people that were asked to leave the meeting, they will not be allowed back in camera, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm gonna say opposed.
Opposed. Trustee O'Hern Trunata?
I'm in favor.
Uh, student trustees are not allowed to vote because they can't go in camera virtually. Uh, trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Vice Chair Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
And trustee Murphy's in favor, so we will move back in camera. If you can go to that, uh, to link, leave this one.